Please call and roll.
Hoffman.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Swallow.
Here.
Edier.
Brooks.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Bowman.
Here.
All right. Item number four is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on a consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, eighteen November twenty twenty-four. Item B, approval of claims in the amount of three hundred seven thousand, six hundred sixty, six hundred sixty-three dollars and six cents and payroll expenses of two hundred sixty-six thousand, four hundred ninety-eight dollars and sixty-six cents. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda.
Same.
I have a motion from Mr. Parsons and second from Mr. Hoffman to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Parsons.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Item six, reports from staff. No planning commission report. Hospital authority meeting on November twenty-sixth. Mr. Bowman?
Mr. Mayor, I could not attend that meeting, so I do not have anything to report at this time.
Okay.
Do we have any update on the transaction with the Hudson Health or where we are on that?
I don't have anything firm. Everything's still in process with the state of Oklahoma and the two parties, so nothing firm. Any other questions regarding the hospital authority? Thank you. Item C is the Alva Public Library Board Meeting on December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Mrs. Swallow?
It was mostly routine business. They have added new graphics on their doors and windows, mostly to help with the glare. They're getting ready to do some repair on the vinyl strippings on the stairs. And they are having an apple cider coffee day on December twenty-third and twenty-fourth for everyone that just wants to come in and visit the library. Apprentice is putting in new cables so they can get them set up so that they can have the filtered usage for on the computers for the year or younger students. And that's pretty much it.
Any questions for Mrs. Swallow? Thank you. Item D is the Alvarina Authority Meeting on December third, twenty twenty-four. The minutes are in your packet. I don't know, do we have anything to share of them?
Not really. Most of the executive actions.
Any questions from the council?
I've had several people ask me what the city's place is with the arena authorities. We are, as far as funding, it's funded by outside, it has nothing to do with our, our general fund, correct?
The TIF district that's been established has a portion of it that is tied to the sales tax generated from the arena. So that's, that's the extent of it. Everything else would be council-driven.
Okay. But we haven't committed to any funds currently from our budget for the arena.
There is not a budget item for the arena.
Okay.
The Tourism Committee has set aside one of their CDs that they are keeping for when the arena needs something, so.
Okay.
But that's the only thing that I am aware of. Next item is the Tourism Tax Commission Special Meeting on November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Would you like to do the report, Mrs. Beer?
Um, we had only two requests raised for their crazy cool Boulevard cruise that will happen next summer. It will coincide with the big class reunion for the gold bug. That was approved. And the bull battle, that was tabled until Wednesday's meeting. He needed to make some adjustments to his request. There were some things missing, so they asked him to fix it. So that will be, our next Wednesday, meeting will be Wednesday at five-thirty. So, but routine business, just the true request, and that was it. Any questions?
Any questions from the council?
Okay.
Thank you. There was an audit board of adjustments meeting. Next item is the Alva Regional Airport Commission Meeting on December ninth. We had, you know, mostly routine business, but we did hear from the Oklahoma Department of Aeronautics and Aviation Commissioner? Director. Artis regarding funding opportunities for airports, both through FAA and ODAAs, as well as some little guidance on how to seek that funding with different projects for our airport. That weren't any action items on that agenda, but I'm happy to answer any question if council has any. Next item is the Parks and Recreation Commission Meeting on December eleventh. Mrs. Swallow?
Okay, it was mostly routine business. We're in the process of updating, updating the policies and procedures. And youth sports are going well, and if you haven't been by the swimming pool lately, the light is up. It looks pretty good.
Any questions for Mrs. Swallow? Thank you. Cemetery meeting on December twelfth, looks like it was canceled. So there's nothing to report there. Finance Committee Meeting on December sixteenth. Mrs. Beer?
So far for the year, we've collected thirty-two percent of our revenue and we've expensed thirty-three, so we're about even. Sales tax was down about fifty percent compared to October, but it'll trend up for what, for the November, December report, sorry. We renewed four CDs with high planes that came due at, for six months, and we don't have anything due until February, and so everything has just been kind of, we're still trying to watch our spending, you know, where we're doing, just so we can stay on track for the year. Any questions?
And just to clarify, the December sales tax check has come in and is about two hundred and...
It was a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars more than November.
Okay.
So it was pretty, it was pretty nice, so you'll see that reflected in next month's report, so. Any other questions?
So looking at page, the page three of the general fund revenue collected versus budgeted, we haven't hit our budgeted amount one time this fiscal year.
Revenues are just, revenues are down.
Okay.
We've talked about that today. Revenues are down. I mean, we're, we are driven off sales tax and utility billing and everything is just, you know, kind of slow.
All right.
I don't, our utility billing is about the same, so I think our sales tax hasn't really been very high, so. But that would be why. Anything else? Okay. If you have any other questions, shoot me an email.
Thank you. As far as the mayor's report is concerned, I just would like to, I guess publicly thank the Chamber of Commerce for the work that they did with bringing Christmas home. It was a great couple of days in our community and it leaded up to it. I think they sold over two hundred thousand dollars worth of candy cane cash tickets and stuff like that, so it was pretty incredible. The amount of investment that folks made of their time and energy as well as their, their dollars in our community during that event and really appreciate what the chamber did there. I do want to draw your attention to your email if you haven't seen it yet. The call for registrations for the twenty twenty-five Congress of Mayors has gone out. That is a very valuable educational opportunity for elected officials, municipal elected officials. And so if you have any interest in that, that information should be in your email. If you didn't get the email, just get ahold of Steve, or if you have questions about that event, please get ahold of me. That probably has been the most valuable education that I've participated in as, as an elected official, so. That would be, that will conclude my report unless somebody has any questions for me. All right. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Ford for the manager's report.
I don't have a whole lot to report other than what was in the, in my email section. I'm starting to get attached to the agenda. I was waiting on some data enjoyers out last Friday, so. But one thing to report is that our maintenance department got their lift in, so that'll increase its efficiency significantly. Now if that and get all that creep and roll running the ground and everything, get it done, so. Got to be good. For the rest of our report, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Godwin to talk about our retail strategies.
All right, good evening. How's everybody doing? Good? I had a couple of different things. You guys have documentation in front of you guys, ran a couple of different reports. I know Greg was reading through it before the meeting. Got to meet with Kirk Humphries and, you know, things are slow. I mean, just kind of everywhere, you know, they run over a billion dollar commercial enterprise and they've only done three deals in the entire last two years. So things are running kind of slow just in general around the entire state and the nation, really. So, but with new elections, people, you know, kind of know where we're going on that, so hopefully it'll be really good the next couple of years coming up, so just pushing forward on that. Seeing see in your, in your items, I have a whole summary of the conversations on many topics that we had had with Mr. Humphries. Specifically, there's a couple of things with some vision planning. I was talking to Ford and we'll get together with you all on scheduling, and I like to do a half-day vision planning session to kind of finalize some things for the, for the city profile as well as just getting some other direction for moving forward, not only from you all, but also from key people in the community. Chamber had a great conversation with Megan over there last month and earlier this month as well as Jody. So, and they also asked for a report for the Christmas event and stuff, so we're going to get that for them as well. And on the front page, I also have a note. If there's any other things that you all would like to see, because you all have my email, so if there's anything else that you guys would like to see, I've kind of put a couple of different things on the City by the Numbers report. Some things, this is all, you know, based on kind of data information. Last month, we did what the complex did last month, just to kind of show how many people are coming in from out of town. Also with the Placer AI reports we did, which you guys have, it has a, it has a heat map on it, so it says kind of in regions where people came from. People came from all over for homecoming and also for the other football events, the twenty-sixth through the twenty-seven, or twenty, twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh that weekend. So that's just data that we have that I've been able to provide. If you guys want anything kind of more specific, please don't hesitate to email me and ask me about it. Also with the, yeah, so make sure on, on the workshop on January, we already spoke about that. And had, Joe, you had a question about the arena, that's one of the other conversations that we did have. I had that conversation with some realtors as well as some people at the chamber. What, what is the regional plan? You know, so getting commissioners together and all that to really understand. Oklahoma lost the national finals rodeo about twenty years ago, but we're still one of the number, we're one of the largest equestrian states in the country. So even though we lost that big massive thing, we compete at a high, high level. And with the arena coming in, having a vision and a plan to push that forward, and whatever we can help, we want to do that because that will make Alva an even bigger spot for people to come. You know, every single time the fairgrounds are filled up downtown with trailers, that's about ten million dollars in spending for that weekend. So, you know, we want to give as much of that up here into Alva as possible. Doing a, so MAPS stands for Metro, Metro Area Projects. So taking it to cities, you know, that's part of the conversation you all like to have. I think it's a really good idea to have that conversation whenever you guys are ready. And one of the best things about MAPS is that we can see what that's done in Oklahoma City Metro, and it's just never been taken to a smaller city scale. And you guys already have the pool that's coming up, you know, all the splash pad, you guys are doing that, you got the master parks plan, things are happening with that and as well as so many other things. And if we can help and just communicate and just say, hey, you know, we want to see this going forward, love to be able to help do that. And because we can see what the success is. And we have even Mr. Ron Norick, he's still alive, hanging out, so I have a meeting with him in the next two weeks, just kind of talk about why, I understand the whole story as to why MAPS happened, but, you know, what would it look like for a smaller regional scale? I just think that's a good idea. January, we'll have, I'll be going to Dallas for the ICSC conference for the International Shopping Centers, which is where all of the big boys go play. So we'll be down there for three days and just talk with people, have a meetings about Alva, what you guys have, what are your demographics, and say, hey, what, what do y'all need, so we can provide that. As well as in the, in the conversation with the vision planning, you know, having TIFs put in place, having some other things put in place, what do you guys want to do and be proactive in those conversations? So if you guys have a company that wants to come here, does the city have any incentive? I've had those conversations many, many times with companies trying to come in. I have another one tomorrow. And it's important to have a plan of action instead of just waiting to be reactive. So that's one of the conversations we'll have, and we had that planning session. Ladies down at the Chamber looked at great, great conversation, and I did contribute to those, those Christmas bucks. So spent some money downtown here in Alva. And also want to make mention, we don't have it in your report, but we identified twenty-six properties here in Alva that are kind of in a commercial space. So we are, have all that data and we're skip tracing and we're having conversations, and I'll bring those names to you guys as well, see if you guys have direct connection so we can have those conversations with those folks. Also, on the last pages that you guys have here, the last two, these are the trends for October across, you know, I knocked it down from all across the country and just kind of did our region. So what are the category trends here in this area of the country in different shopping and different things? So, any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Godwin?
And also, do you guys prefer having paper in front of you or would you guys rather have an email? Is another question too.
I prefer paper.
I mean, I have rights, I mean, I got notes, so. I can keep bringing, I can make sure the paper's still available, so.
Plenty of trees in northwest Oklahoma.
Yeah, I mean, there is, so just keep them, you know, there has to be a rotation, you know, it's good. All right. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Let me know if y'all need anything.
Any other questions for Mr. Ford regarding his report?
Are there someone else?
Just a pal?
No. I was scared, my son.
Okay.
My uncle's upset, I leave.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is a presentation from Enterprise Fleet Services. No? Oh, well, sorry. Getting a little out of order. Well, way out of order. All right. Next item is remarks and inquiries by citizens. Anybody who'd like to make a comment to the council? We'll give you two minutes per speaker, and we ask that you please identify yourself. Comments in this evening? All right. Well, we're glad everybody's here. Okay. Item number eight is the NWSU Foundation Presentation on the Alva Incentive Scholarship Program for Fall twenty twenty-four. Mr. Skeeter Bird can give us a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I'll be brief. I want to do, start out by thanking the council for the support for our students. We continue to do that, it's a huge investment, but it's also a huge return on investment. We've talked about that a number of times. What you should have in front of you is a bill for two hundred ninety-two thousand, five hundred fifty-one dollars and fifty cents. I'll address any questions that you might have. With me tonight is Dr. David Pecky, and then I'll be followed by Dr. Bo Hannaford when I'm done. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Bird?
Okay. Once again, thank you, and also thank the citizens of Alva for support for this scholarship.
I'll be brief as well, and also I want to, on behalf of the university and our students, thank city council and the city of Alva for the support that we give for that half-sit sales tax. I just wanted to give you a little bit of data for the upcoming semester. We're real excited, we just looked at the enrollment data for this coming spring, and as of this morning, we were fourteen percent up for the spring enrollment. Mr. Parsons, that's about a little over five percent in Alva alone, so fifty-some students. So not only great retention from an eight percent increase in the fall, but also getting some new students. And then also, we told you that we will continue to bring activities to our community in northwestern Oklahoma State University. Most recently, we did host two high school playoff games again. We were only one. University of Central Oklahoma had some of the state championship games. We were the only other institution in the state that held playoff games. So we're really good, the relationship that we built with them, and I think we've got good chances to continue that in the future. And of course, our rodeo, another great event. I think it was over five hundred and fifty, five hundred and seventy entries, or participants, about seven hundred and fifty entries, and really excited what we could do with the new arena coming up and growing that event as well. So thank you again for your support, and we'll, we'll see you next semester. Any questions?
Any questions for Dr. Hannaford?
Thank you.
Thank you. And just to reiterate, we, we really enjoy the relationship that we have as a city with our university. The students are wonderful. Had somebody stop me today as a student to tell me how much they appreciated the community, and I think it shows in the way that they give back. And so thank you for being here this evening. We will have the vote on the scholarship funding at the economic development meeting here in just a little bit, so.
All right. Next item is presentation from Enterprise Fleet Services, and we have John, John Holland, is that correct?
All right.
John Holland with us this evening.
Thanks for having me out again. Good you got it up there, too. Would you like to add anything before I get started, or do we just jump? Yeah. Okay. As y'all know, I came out and presented what the program would do for the city of Alva and some of the cities that we partner with around the area. Ultimately, my goal is to get you guys to a shorter cycle, which would lower both operating costs and increase the resale on these vehicles, overall lowering the, the total over operational cost for y'all to operate vehicles. Some of the big soft dollar savings that I could see are benefits would be with the employees, obviously having newer vehicles where they're not setting in a truck without AC or having to work on it all the time would definitely help. It'd also free up time in the shop to work on other equipment, stuff like that, because these newer vehicles would need oil changes and possibly tire rotations. So when you put this together, our initial plan, we took the eleven, I believe it was eleven. Yeah. We took eleven vehicles, ranging from everything from street, water, sanitation, public works, director, sanitary, basically everybody had a part in what we were looking at. Those eleven vehicles, if you went out tomorrow and purchased them, would cost you about five hundred and fifty to six hundred thousand dollars. So what we've proposed, and if you'll scroll over just a little bit, what I did is basically broke down what these vehicles would cost, including some of the aftermarket that would be needed on them. And what that did was show you, hey, this is what we could do from an annual perspective. It would cost annual cost excluding maintenance, a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars for those eleven vehicles. Upfront costs for aftermarket, so the police vehicles has some aftermarket on it, and then we had a utility bed on one, a flatbed on one of the vehicles. The reason we asked for some money down on that, this equipment is specific to the needs of Alva, and so some of that would just need to be offset through mitigation, through a down payment whenever the vehicle arrives. So in essence, that vehicle would be delivered, ready to go, and then that bill after that vehicle is delivered is when that would be expected to be paid. So the total budget needed for those eleven vehicles was a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And then if you see the green column over here, scroll over one more thing. I showed what it would look like. Oh, it cut off by one, one nil for years. Basically, on the far right of this, I put a fifth year estimated equity and stuff like the...
There's Bob, he says that right there.
Yeah, I did that kind of to help myself with some notes. But on the far right of this, there is a fifth year estimated valuation of the average age of that vehicle or average book value of that vehicle. And just like on that top row, that F-350, after five years, fifty thousand miles, should still be worth about thirty-two, thirty-three thousand dollars. And that's in average condition, not in clean condition, not in rough, but, and that's where this can benefit you guys even more. We're not, we're going to look at setting these up on a five-year rotation reviewed annually, but Enterprise as a partner will look at this year over year to make sure that we're spending the right money. And if these vehicles have a higher resale value at any given point in their life, we would make recommendations, and I say that candidly, we would make a recommendation to replace it, but you guys are in the driver's seat of this, so you guys get to pick when these go in and out. Let's say it gets to the end of the five years and you're like, hey, we need to float a spare somewhere, we can extend these out until they're paid off. There's multiple ways, that's why we call it open-ended. But all this equity at the end of the lease would go back to the city, and that's why I put this, the section in green, which allows for y'all to see what the effective second generation would look like. So if we started out at a thousand sixty-seven on that top one, with the equity applied back to this vehicle at the end, if you did the, just rolled that equity into the very next vehicle, you would see seven hundred and twenty-three thou, or seven hundred and twenty-three dollar a month payment. So in essence, dropped about three hundred dollars just by rolling equity from one vehicle to the next. So this program should get cheaper over time.
And this is your cost, John, is for the next year and a half, correct?
Yeah, so we're looking at right now any immediate needs and then fiscal year twenty twenty, give me, on the right.
Twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yeah, twenty-five, twenty-six. So this, in essence, there's going to be some that y'all need sooner rather than later instead of dumping a lot of money into vehicles that are either going down or went down. And then as we transition, I'd like to factory order most of these vehicles, drop ship them directly here, because what that would in essence do is allow for us to order the vehicles exactly how we want them at the best possible price. But yes, it's, this is looking at not only getting started, you know, January, February, but also looking at anything that we may need to order to hit the next fiscal year's budget start.
So in, in this may, it's probably more of a question for Steve or Sadie, but what, in not having asked us in advance, if you want to, if you need to go back and get the information for, for the next time we meet, that's fine, or to email it out to everybody. But it would be helpful to see what our current annual spend is on lease payments, and if any of these vehicles replace any of those vehicles.
They don't. Are they? No.
They don't, okay. But to see, you know, kind of how that compares, because I know we have several that we're, you know, that we have on lease right now.
Yeah, the ones right over the three new F-150s for the police department.
Well, F-150s, a couple of ambulances.
These guys have them.
I ran away from those.
I don't think we have any like more, our day-to-day trucks, I don't think they're on the list right now.
The only ones that we have are the three F-150s for the PD.
Okay. Well, I would kind of like to see the breakdown still per vehicle, what they're costing us, so I can compare that to what it would cost us with these moving forward. Because I think, I think it makes sense to try to keep a fleet in good repair, which we haven't always been real good at. And if we can do so in an economical way, that's, you know, responsible to our taxpayers, I think that's something that we can take a look at, but.
Just a couple of reminders for everybody. Ours, our funding source, our lease, no mileage penalties, nowhere in terror, no penalties whatsoever on it, so there's a lot of benefits to that. You guys get to keep all the equity at the end when we sell it, and we are that awarded Sourcewell contract, so doing business with this is fairly easy. I like it. The Sourcewell contract, due to the pricing structure that it has, it's our best possible one, so just would like to add that. one, so just would like to add that.
So, and I look, I'm looking at this now, I don't see here, as far as like the, and maybe I'm just missing it, how much is left on what we would, I guess, owe on those vehicles at the end of that five-year term?
If you go to Section AJ, which is the reduced book value, so in essence, this vehicle, let's go farthest right, I think it's on there, sorry, you're left, or you're that way? Yeah. Well, I saw that, but I wanted to, so we've taken this $50,000 vehicle down to an $11,000 balance with an estimated $32,000 in equity at the end, so 32 minus the 11 is where that $20,000 of equitable return is coming back. Okay. So that reduced book value is what makes this vehicle a lease. We have options to do traditional financing, the lease is by far the best way for cash flow.
I'm not, I mean, I think it could be a good thing. I know last year during our budget meeting, we had departments come to us saying, we want these vehicles, some of them, you know, at the time we felt like we kind of afford. I know that, you know, it's a little different deal, and it seems like the pricing is reasonable, but, I mean, right now, I'm looking at, November is down almost $300,000 in SaaS tax revenue. And so, my, I would love to see every vehicle in the city be a new, nice vehicle. I think, you know, I want our employees to have the best we can afford, what they need to get their jobs done and make their jobs as efficient as possible, but I know this isn't all this fiscal year, but I feel like this is something that I, I'm not, you know, saying never, but I mean, how I look at it is, until we get budget requests for next year, I don't feel comfortable with this because there may be something that's maybe a little bit more important than one of these vehicles here. And I know all these vehicles here serve a purpose and are important to the city, but as far as this goes, if we approve this contract each time we want to add a vehicle, would that come to council as a being approved, or how does that work? Or is approving this contract, does this tie along with, and we're approving that we're going to lease purchase 11 new vehicles?
The agreements that are on the agenda tonight is an agreement to enter into a contractual agreement or government language with Enterprise with no stipulation on amount of vehicles that you need to do. I've had this done multiple times, and that's why in the agreements, there's a non-appropriation clause. So let's just hypothetically think that we want to do 11, and we come time for budget, and we have enough money for eight or nine. I mean, I don't want you to back out of vehicles, but we also know that we have to put that in there to make sure that cities are able to get to where they're at from a budget standpoint. And you're absolutely right, things do come up that's more pressing. The concern is, is if I'd looked at your fleet overall, with the exception of probably five or six, the data says replace it, with all of them. And that's where I told Steve, and I was like, listen, I think there's a better route. I think smaller cities, like the ones I grew up in and where I'm at right now, is, it's important to kind of ease into this year over year, and that's why we kind of started a little bit differently than what the data would have suggested us doing.
Is there a minimum number of vehicles we have to do per year with you guys?
Total overall flues, how many?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. I mean, if you did two or three, you wouldn't want to make a lot of financial sense either way. You want to see a big enough change, and typically what I've seen in 15 years of doing this, those tend to, oh, this didn't really do anything. So, I think probably five to six is probably minimum, what Enterprise would have an expectation on, just looking at the math of it, five-year cycle, 26 vehicles, you'd be looking at that. 11 would have the biggest impact, because one, you're going to be selling off your 11 oldest vehicles, so there'll be some money coming back from those. Two, your operational cost now has dropped by a half or a quarter, or a little over a quarter. And so, those 11 vehicles are going to have oil changes every seven months, eight months, and so those are going to definitely draw down some of that. But, again, I also understand budgets with cities.
And did I, did I hear you say that your agreement is structured such that, that we're compliant with our, what it, what it had a...
Yeah, I can't figure how you would...
Not obligating a future council?
Correct. Yeah, there's no agreements, there's no multi-year agreements, it's reviewed annually. Even our quotes, they say five-year term, and the agreements state that we're going to review that annually, so to make sure budget dollars are still there.
Now, if, say, we're into this, two years in, for some reason, we can't afford to continue, I'm sure there's some sort of penalty, will you explain that to me?
So, say you can't afford to continue using the vehicle?
Yes.
Well, that option, especially with cities, kind of works out really well. That vehicle's, you bought it better than most, and so what that looks like is that vehicle's equitable from possibly day one, just depending on which vehicle it is and how much aftermarket's on it. And so if it gets to a point two years in, you should be equitable still in that vehicle. We would sell off the vehicle and then give you back any equity to the vehicle.
The vehicles on this list, is that the ones you're, we're looking to start with?
The second tab. So there's a second tab to this that we've worked through, Stephen and I, and what we basically did was anything that was over, it was anything 2008 and older. There's one 2014 350 on there, E350, that didn't make sense at all for y'all to have in the fleet anyways, so that was a road van, correct? That would be going out, and a crew cab would be coming in. But yeah, these are all mostly just older vehicles. I think in that first year, we had one, two, three, four, five, six, and then the rest of the next, where the next 18 months were, was one, two, three, four, five, so five more, so 11 total.
The ones that are up on screen, are those the ones?
Yes. Correct.
So, I may be counting, but you keep saying 11, that's 10. Where's the...
There's two. Two on that one, police responder.
The very first bula. Okay. According by type? Okay, sorry.
Yeah, I set it up kind of later, I apologize. I wanted to make sure and differentiate between each one, like cemetery and that, so police has its own category.
Now, are we adding any vehicles to our fleet that we don't already have, or are these vehicles that we, so we already have, we're going to be, this is just replacing, there's none being added, you know?
Any other questions from the council? All right. Well, thank you, appreciate all your work you're doing with Steve and the staff to try and figure out a solution for us moving forward, and move on to our next item to consider the agreement with Enterprise Fleet Services and authorize the mayor and our city business manager to sign on document. Thank you, John, for being here with us this evening, and I don't know, I don't know if we'll, where we'll come out on this tonight, but we do appreciate all the information you brought to us.
That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, and that's what I was going to say, I think unless the council sees otherwise, I would recommend we table this and get the costs associated with these vehicles that we anticipate, you know, particularly the ones that were on the list there for that top 11, and maybe bring it back to us with your, your top five, I guess. If five or six is kind of the, the minimum entry level for this endeavor, kind of maybe bring us back those options as well. We can either let this die for lack of motion, or somebody can vote to table it, which will ensure that we have to bring it back up again.
I'll make a motion to table, I'll make a motion to table item number 10 on the agenda to a later date.
The motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Bowman and a second from Mr. Hoffman to table item number 10 on the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Larr?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
All right. Thanks again. Item number 11 is discussion action to approve Mr. John Ryerson to the City of Alba Pool and Parks Advisory Committee. Kim Baugh had been serving on that committee and has taken employment outside of Alva, making her availability not that, pretty inconsistent for this, and so I've had conversations with Mr. Ryerson, and he has interest in, in seeing the pool get finished, but also he's, he's got a pretty high interest in the master plan for Hatfield Park and the other parks as well. He's got development experience, he's got, you know, contractor experience, construction experience, you know, all of that stuff. He's qualified and willing to serve, and that is my recommendation. And is there any discussion?
I'd make a motion to appoint Mr. John Ryerson to the City of Alba Pool and Parks Advisory Committee.
Second.
Have a motion for Mr. Parsons, a second from Dr. Larr to appoint John Ryerson to the City of Alba Pool and Parks Advisory Committee. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Parsons?
Yes.
Larr?
Yes.
Brooks?
Same.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
All right. Item 12, discussion in action to approve MOC Energy Services LLC bid for ODOT Waterline Relocation Project along Highway 64, that costs $45,608. In your packet, you'll see the bid tabulations sheet, the bid from MOC, and the recommendation letter from Myers Engineering. This is project that I believe is east of town, starting somewhere near four miles, or excuse me, west of town, somewhere near four miles west. And going out there, it is because of an ODOT project with the highway, and so this is to take care of our lines that are out there. It is completely funded by the state, there's no match for the city, but it is our property, so that's why we have this on our agenda. Is there anything to add? Steve, is there strictly a pass here?
I'll make a motion to approve MOC Energy Services bid for ODOT Waterline Relocation Project along Highway 64, that costs $45,608.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Bowman, a second from Dr. Larr to approve MOC Energy Services LLC bid for ODOT Waterline Relocation Project along Highway 64, that costs $45,608. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Larr?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Item 13 is discussion in action to approve Resolution 2024-022, resolution of the City of Alba City Council authorizing Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group to distribute workman's compensation escrow account funds of $21,994.95, as option one, a lump sum to the City of Alva, or option two, to be applied to the City of Alva O-MAG policy premiums. This might have been where I've got mixed up in, on a previous agenda item, when we had this conversation, but this is...
We've been in this leash position twice a year, a little bit recently. It's pretty standard.
And so when we, Steve, did you have a preference for, I would think the cash in hand would be better than applying to a future premium, but I don't know?
Well, we, in the past, it was applying to the future premium, to our O-MAG premiums.
I think because you get the cash, you get it back, then you start to pay.
Yeah, you start to...
Okay. Counsel, have any discussion on the matter? So your recommendation is option two? Well, if there's no discussion, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-022, a resolution of the City of Alba Council authorizing Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group to distribute workman's compensation escrow account funds in the, of $21,994.95, using, using option two to be applied to the City of Alva O-MAG policy premiums.
Second.
Have a motion for Mr. Bowman, a second from Dr. Larr to approve Resolution 2024-022, resolution authorizing O-MAG to distribute workers' compensation escrow account funds of $21,994.95 to be applied to the City of Alva O-MAG policy premiums. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Larr?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Item 14 is discussion in action to approve City of Alba Resolution 2024-023, resolution of the Alba City Council amending the fiscal year 24, 25 budget for the City of Alva.
When did the budget, you didn't budget it to a transfer agreement to the cemetery, and then you did the transfer some money to the cemetery.
Was that...
We budgeted last year, we just dropped it a little bit this year.
Oversight?
Yeah, oversight, so...
I think the transfer never happened last year.
Yeah.
All right. So this is for, you said cemetery? How much money?
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand to the cemetery from the general fund, correct?
Yes.
Any discussion from the council?
So is their budget this year, it's going to happen last year, is there something, has their budget gone up?
No, we just, just oversight, the budget was transferred to them to give them some wind count. I mean, you know, business has been pretty steady out there, but you still don't make a lot of money on selling, you know, cemetery plots, so it's, it doesn't make enough to fund itself, put it that way.
There's not any further discussion or questions, I'd entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the City of Alba Resolution 2024-023, a resolution of the Alba City Council amending the FY 2024, 2025 annual budget for the City of Alva.
Second.
Have a motion for Mr. Parsons, a second from Mr. Hoffman to approve City of Alba Resolution 2024-023, amending the fiscal year 24, 25 annual budget for the city. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Parsons?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Larr?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Item 15 is discussion in action to approve ordinance number 2025-005, amendment to the City of Alva Code of Ordinances, Chapter 44, Article 5, solid waste sections 44-233 through 44-289, by revoking said sections in their entirety and replacing those sections with the immediate ordinance governing solid waste within the City of Alva. I looked through this, and there was one question that was brought to my attention just a little bit before the board meeting, that I drew, are we able to make pending changes to this and approve it, or is that...
Well, I think you'd have to, if there was a motion, they'd have to say with the change of...
So it's possible?
It's possible, yeah. I mean, it may be easier if we, if we know there needs to be a change made, or believe there's going to be a change made, it'd be maybe easier, cleaner to have a just clean copy of it brought back, unless this is something that's needed right away.
So, like, this is, you know, our sanitation ordinance, and so with the, I guess I'll let you weigh in, is the urgency such that we can continue to operate with our current waste connection contract without making these changes today? Because the changes brought to my attention would have no, it could be brought up at a later date.
Well, we've got a contract with them, so I don't think that's an issue. Well, we've got a contract with them, so I don't think that's an issue. Obviously, I'm, with having them in here, it's different from what our current ones are, so this still, ordinance wouldn't take that till it's posted.
So the, the item, I am, I am not opposed, um, to approving this ordinance as is. The question that may need consideration in the future and would just be accomplished with another amendment would be on the, um, polycarts and their placement, requirements for where they are placed when it's not the scheduled trash pickup day. That's been brought to me by some citizens, a council member brought it to me as well. But having some rules defined for whether those are okay to be left in the street all the time, or, or not. That's undefined in this current ordinance as it sits, and, um, but I don't think that that particular section needs to be in there this evening, but I do think it's something that we're going to have to address in the future.
And I don't know if, there's a couple things that I don't know if this will need to be in there, but my understanding is it's, you get one free dump a month with a water bill, is that?
That's the next item on the agenda.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay.
Yeah. Are there any questions regarding the ordinance? I don't think that was in the ordinance.
No, 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 it's not, okay, yeah, I was just talking.
Well, the ordinance talks about city council will set rates for dumping, but it specifically says landfill, and I changed that to transfer site. So that's why it would have to be next item on the agenda, is to set those rates.
Okay, but that doesn't, it, it doesn't have to be defined in the ordinance, okay.
It says that's approved by council.
Okay.
Any other discussion on the ordinance? If there is no further discussion, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-two-five dash zero zero five, an amendment to the Alba, to the City of Alba Ordinance, Chapter forty-four, Article five, Solid Waste Sections forty-four dash two thirty-three through forty-four dash two eighty-nine, by revoking said sections in their entirety and replacing those sections with the immediate ordinance governing solid waste within the City of Alba.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Bowman, a second by Mrs. Swallow to approve ordinance twenty-two-five dash zero zero five, or Article, or Chapter forty-four, Article five, Solid Waste Sections forty-four dash two thirty-three through forty-four dash two eighty-nine, revoking said sections and replacing them with the immediate ordinance governing solid waste for the City of Alba. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Larr?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Now, item sixteen is, and before we go to sixteen, you can maybe, figure out where that might fit in the ordinance?
Yeah.
For the receptacles?
Yeah, it talks about, this place, it talks about placement, and then we shout out a paragraph, and they're saying that...
Off-schedule placement?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, bringing that back to us. All right, item sixteen, discussion in action to approve transfer station disposal policies and policies, procedures, and rates. Those have been sent to everybody, and I believe they were based off another community, Owasso.
Yep.
Owasso's rates, um, and there's, you know, you saw, there's a good number of lists of fees and, and ways to go about collecting. But there's also, in the event that we should obtain some scales, there's also pricing already in there per ton, to be able to do that as well. Now, Joe?
There's a couple things on this. First was, I see if scales become available, the charge will be fifty per ton. From talking, this is a while ago, talking to one of the guys who does the roll-offs, he takes them to the same place we take our trash, and he's paying significantly more than the deal that we get with them. I would just wanna make sure that our charge per ton is more than what they're charging, because
It is, it's, it is.
Even charging other people that don't do a lot of volume, I, just because I don't wanna, I don't want it to turn into a, I mean, unless we want it to turn into that, but I just, if roll-off companies start coming here, I mean, that's gonna be a lot of wear and tear, I mean, how to look at that, it's not necessarily a moneymaker, it's just a service we provide for our citizens, so. I wanna be fair for our citizens, but I don't wanna be so competitive that we have a bunch of commercial people that are gonna give us more than we can handle, so.
I, I plan to take any roll-off.
Okay.
This is out there, and these rates are set to where we're gonna try to hopefully limit our church to me now to two a month.
Okay.
And like the mayor said, that, that price per ton rate, more than covers the price we pay per ton, that'll help offset our fuel, you know, we're in town with trucks, all that kind of stuff. So, and it's, it's fair, it's comparable to a lot of other cities that do have scales, so.
And then the other thing is, with one dump per month, and I don't know if there's a way to do this, but I know there's, you know, sometimes people may go six months and not need a dump, and then they may need to do four, they may be doing a project and need to have four dumps in one month, so is there a way to maybe order some sort of stamp where we could stamp their water bill, if they had three or four water bills for previous months, that way, because not everyone's gonna need to use them all in one month, I don't know if that might be something we could look at, I did have someone say, well, I don't go out there regularly, but I may go out five times a year, and three of them maybe in one month.
Well, so what, what, what the, the nicest thing about waste connections is if you look at a contract with them, twice a year, kind of thinking of as a spring cleanup, a summer, or a ball cleanup, they're gonna provide us four roll-offs, four thirty-yard roll-offs, strategic places throughout town, and people could put all the trash and stuff in there they want during those two times a year, which might help prevent them needing to take three or four trips out to, to the transfer site, and that's very, that's a free charge for the city. We don't have to pay for that twice a year, so that would be my answer to toss up that particular problem.
Okay.
Do it either at the spring or, or ball cleanup, and use those, those thirty yards while we got them.
Say my neighbor doesn't ever haul anything out, and I've already gone out there, you know, hauled stuff out there for that month, can I use my neighbor's? Can he give me his trip out there?
We wouldn't have any way to track that, so the answer is, I guess, I mean, like I said, we couldn't track it. I couldn't tell you if the trash in back of your truck is yours or your neighbor's.
Yeah.
Is it based on the person who actually is driving it out there, or how?
No, so what we've been telling folks is like, um, let's say you hire, you know, tree company X to come cut down some trees in New York. They're gonna bring those out there to our limp pile. If they bring me your water bill, we're not gonna charge you to drop that first load off, and if they bring in two or three more loads, they're gonna charge for it. So, no, it doesn't necessarily have to be the person driving, uh, that has, that, that way the contract should use your water bill and try to send some of that money at least once.
Right. So do you have to physically take your water bill out there?
Yes.
Okay, and now, um...
We will have a spreadsheet to where the, the attendant can type in, like the account number, if we brought it out there, and keep track of how many times they come out there and, and charges.
If you, let's say, just, if people, because I throw away mine, you know, as soon as I go pay it, if I throw it away, is there any way to track that, or am I just start paying?
No, they can, you can always come to the city hall, we can print it off.
Oh, okay, okay.
A paper.
I was just curious, so, yeah.
Now, is there, say if somebody has a double axle stacked with trash, is that still gonna qualify as a free dump? Do we have any, okay.
One time.
One time, okay.
Yeah.
The contractors and homeowners leave it, when you go there, does it buy the ton? Like a homeowner and a contractor would be paying the same price, right? I know I had some people that didn't think that that was fair, that, you know, homeowner would be paying the same price.
I said, we're not trying to make any money off this, we're trying to make enough to cover our costs to take the stuff to me now.
Yeah, I was gonna say, at fifty dollars a ton, I mean, that's...
You know, I mean, even, you know, four dollars, you bring, bring a hefty bag of trash up to twenty-four bucks, I mean, you're, we're not trying to make money on this, we're trying to keep the track, I'm trying to get that available for the citizens, because it's a service everybody likes. I bet in the same token, we're trying not to get that cost us a whole lot of money.
Is there any other discussion?
Last question I have, is this tied to, I mean, is there some customers that may have a water, whether it's outside city limits or inside, that may have a water bill that aren't paying for trash service? Do they still have access to that, or is this, is, I, I mean, I would think this would fall under the, you know, the trash fee on our water bills?
When I, when I say water bill, what I mean is utility bill.
Okay.
So, yeah, so if, if they live outside the city limits and they don't have our water, but they may have our trash and have our fuel, then they can still use this.
But what if they?
They have to have the sanitation.
They have to have sanitation on that bill to be able to dump, because that...
Otherwise, it's gonna be...
Okay. Perfect.
If there's no further discussion, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve transfer station disposal policies, procedures, and rates.
I'll second. Have a motion from Mr. Hoffman, a second from Mr. Bowman to approve the transfer station disposal policy procedures and rates. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Brooks?
No.
Parsons?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Larr?
Yes.
We do not have anything that qualifies as new business, to my knowledge. Are there any remarks and inquiries by council members? If there being none, we will adjourn the city council meeting and open the Alba Economic Development Authority meeting. Please call the roll.
Hoffman?
Here.
Larr?
Here.
Hoffman?
Here.
Adir? Brooks?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Item three is discussion in action on consent agenda. All of the following items that, um, can, excuse me. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at ADA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes at the regular meeting of eighteen November twenty-twenty-four, and item B, approval of claims in the amount of fifty thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and one cent, and payroll expenses of twenty thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and six cents. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Have a motion from Mr. Hoffman, a second from Mr. Bowman to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Larr?
Yes.
Item five is discussion in action to approve the NWSU twenty-two-four Fall Semester Alba Incentive Scholarship expenditures in the amount of two hundred and ninety-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty cents. We heard the presentation earlier and had the opportunity to ask questions, is there any council discussion on this matter? If there being none, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the NWSU twenty-two-four Fall Semester Alba Incentive Scholarship expenditures in the amount of two hundred and ninety-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Bowman, a second from Mr. Hoffman to approve the NWSU twenty-two, twenty, twenty-two-four Fall Semester Alba Incentive Scholarship expenditures in the amount of two hundred and ninety-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty cents. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Larr?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Brooks?
No.
Item six is new business, we don't have anything that qualifies as new business. Item seven is to adjourn. And we will call the order of the regular Alba Utility Authority meeting. Please call the roll.
Hoffman?
Here.
Larr?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Adir? Brooks?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Item three is discussion in action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of eighteen November twenty-twenty-four, approval of claims in the amount of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and seventy-two cents, and payroll expenses of forty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty-one cents. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda, second.
Have a motion from Dr. Larr, a second from Mr. Hoffman to approve the consent agenda, is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Larr?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
We have no new business, and we are adjourned, thank you.